I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board correspondent report.
Amy. Uh, you're gonna need me. It's rather lengthy, but I will.
Well, is it the end of the session?
All right, yes, all right. So the legislature, the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four legislature wrapped up this week. They're now adjourned until the next legislator is inaugurated in January twenty twenty-five. The Department of Public Instruction issued a memo that summarizes all the K-12 education legislations. I was gonna read them all, but it's rather lengthy, so. There were a number of bills that the governor had vetoed that the legislator tried to bring back, and they still, they didn't meet the two-thirds, so they didn't go forward. The Republican legislature is suing Governor Evers and DPI for the partial veto of Wisconsin Act one hundred. And now the governor and DPI are suing the legislative back. The question is whether or not Senate Bill nine seventy-one is an appropriations bill where it could be partially vetoed or simply it just authorizes a joint finance committee to release the funds. And that's kind of the big thing that's at stake right now.
And that's all related to the money for the?
Act twenty.
Act twenty.
Yeah, so even though the funding is tied up, Act twenty is still in place for twenty twenty-five, and schools should still plan accordingly for that. With the University of Wisconsin-Madison, they'll be extending their teacher pledge program through the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. And it covers the cost of in-state tuition, testing and licensing for students who attend UW-Madison's teacher program, which is good. It helps feed that pipeline of teachers, because that seems to be dwindling at the moment. So that's very good. Otherwise, this program would have ended next year. This way, it's guaranteed at least four more years. All right, and seclusion and restraint data came out for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, and most schools are down, which is good. Although students with IEPs continue to make up the majority of the students that are being secluded and restricted.
Questions or discussion? And now we'll move on to the board's CISA report.
We only had a Head Start partial meeting on our regularly scheduled meeting, and the purpose of that was to approve the summary of enrollment report for Head Start. They are taking about a fifty-two person reduction in their Head Start numbers due to staffing. Our next meeting is actually on Wednesday of this week. It is our re, I wanna call it reelection, I'm trying to, delegate convention is on Wednesday of this week, and that will be where the seats that are open get new board members assigned. So we have two CISA meetings, so our regular meeting will be on Wednesday.
Student representative report.
Right, so honestly, graduations on Sunday. The abilities recently had their last sale, and also made a gift for all graduating seniors. There was a reality fair that was planned by event marketing students. We also had Kiwani, two students involved in that, to kind of try what it would be like in the real world, and like pay bills and stuff like that. Softball, we're regional champs, and they're playing Ron Colly tomorrow. Two DI teams, one in the secondary level, one in the elementary level, made it to globals. ABA has their showcase on Wednesday. And then summer school and Wolfden will resume when summer school starts.
Okay, okay. That's senior, your years are getting close to an end.
Yep.
I don't have any misconceptions or rumors. Did anyone sign in?
No.
No public participation. Announcements, there is a number of things. I don't know if all of you saw that CISA seven invitation for June thirteenth at six P.M. There is a complimentary Gate Beam buffet at the community store. They're basically doing, you might know more about this than I do.
I didn't know anything about it, and I don't have it in my email even, so.
Yeah, it's an evening of networking dinner and insightful discussions, and it's for all of CISA seven, open to school board members and superintendents. So anybody who is interested in going to that, let's see, what's there? There is a R S V P by the end of the month.
Far, may I interject? I contacted Colleen at CISA seven last week, late last week, and she would like myself and one of our board members to be on the panel for this. So if there's anyone that would like to do it, email her that name tomorrow.
So what does that exactly mean, being on a panel?
So I think it's for, it's intended for new board members. It's probably very similar to the WASB one that we attended. Opportunity to just come, ask questions, learn what the board role is, things like that.
I mean, because this sounds much less formal. It sounds like it's really more for talking with other people and discussing things, so. Well.
Distinguished panel of superintendents and board members. Should we experience a little insight?
Okay, so it'd be just people talking about their experience. So, okay, so if we bought it, look at our calendars, that's one event. The other thing, which I will reaffirm more than stadium, that this Wednesday is the showcase for local more venture academy. Katie will probably tell me that in her report too, but I want to bring it up, because I think it is the best way for the board to understand what our charter school's all about, and really always enjoyable to go to and see what the students are up to. And then you probably got the summer learning symposium thing in the mail, July twelfth and thirteenth at the Hyatt Regency in Green Bay. It's just another opportunity that if anybody is interested in going to those, that is something that if you're interested in going, we will certainly cover the expense of it and if somebody wants to do that. So that takes care of that. And I need to finish the committee assignments. I've informed all of you through emails what I was planning to do, so this shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. So the final, the final committees that hadn't been officially assigned. Finance will be Rogers, O'Connell, and Benish. Public relations and marketing will be Schley. Passcheck.
That's pretty good.
I was, well, I was told how to say it, but I had forgotten. Passcheck and Fenndale. And charter school will be Johnson, Passcheck, and Rogers. The first person listed is the chair. And we had already assigned building grounds and the policy and practice. So those are the standing committees for the moment. If anything comes up where we need to do an ad hoc, we will assign it at that. Okay, moving on to administration reports.
All right, good evening, everyone. We'll start things off with some key takeaways. So we'll do an update on financial finances. Amber will also talk a little bit about the life insurance for retirees and changes. We have Kevin here from there, who will be presenting about some referendum finances. And then I will finish up with congratulations to the class of two thousand twenty-four, open enrollment applications, CISA seven contract, and our Bay Lake Regional Planning Contract. Amber, turn it over to you.
Okay. So this is your monthly update on the revenues and expenditures. At this point in the year, we are ten months in. This is as of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. So at the, at ten months in, you would be around eighty-three percent or under. As each day goes by here in my new role with the district, I'm learning more and more. And one of the things that I just learned is the way our payroll is posted is not one-twelfth each month, because we have teachers who take pay all year round. So each month only is about eight percent or so. But in June, we're gonna be posting about twenty-five percent of the wages for the teachers, because the payments they get in July and August are for this fiscal year, so we post those in June. So that's why those expenditure percentages are a little bit lower than our targeted rate. So they are gonna come up towards the end of the year. The teachers have all purchased their supplies. The principals are working on their final purchases for the year and getting some classroom furniture laid out and ready to go for next year. We have year-end entries that will be coming up. So the payroll, like I just talked about, the annual transfer is out. We have transfers that need to go from Fund Ten oh to Fund Twenty-seven, which is the special education fund, and Fund Forty-six, our capital projects fund. And then we need to do a posting at the end of the year for our general aid payments. So when we get those aid payments in from the state, we have to receive in the full amount and then do a journal entry to account for the expense that they deduct for open enrollment. And then, of course, the food service revenue posting as people are making payments into their children's lunch accounts. We don't account that as revenue until they actually spend it, so we have to do some year-end journal entry. So that's gonna be coming down. So our operating funds are looking.
Actually, hold on.
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I don't know, asking a question through the chair, anyway. General aid payments, how often do they come in?
So they come in.
Is it twice a year, once a year?
No, it depends on which aid payment. So some of them come in quarterly, some of them only come in twice a year. And that's all I know for sure, I have to look at the cheat sheet for that.
Yeah, equalization aid, which is the biggest block of aid.
Yes.
It comes in in, I think, four blocks, and it's pretty, it's not uniform. And I don't remember the percentages, but you get a lot of it in, I believe, December and a lot of it in June. But after your payroll is paid, in October, I think is it there?
There is a cheat sheet on the DPI's website that I actually have printed off and on my desk that gives you the percentages and dates that are all paid. So if you would like to see that, I can share that with you.
Yeah, just equalization, I can look it up too, but I need to.
So then our other funds, this is just to keep you updated, our debt funds, the regular debt, and then the referendum debt. We have made all the payments for the year, we're good to go there. Everything was paid on time. And then our long-term capital improvement fund obviously isn't gonna have any expenditures this year, because we weren't planning on any projects. So those expenses will probably come up next year as we start getting rolling on some projects. Okay, so life insurance. We kind of did this last board meeting, maybe a couple board meetings ago. We had our life insurance through MetLife. They did a, what's called a book of business review, and they determined that they were no longer going to offer the plan that we were on. It was a legacy plan, it was costing them money, they didn't like it, so they said, we're getting rid of it. Here's your new rates. So working with them three, they helped us request some options and get quotes from others. The only other company that quoted us was the Standard Insurance Company, the Standard. And the board decided that that's who we're gonna go with. So because we made that change, we'll go to the next slide. We have some things that need to be taken care of. We have a new provider, so Allison's working to get all the staff to turn in their sheets to get all the information over to the new provider. Our rate structure is now a two-rate structure. We used to have one flat rate for both active employees and retirees. Now we have two separate rates, which provides a little bit more balance to that, and it's a little more fiscally responsible for the district. We're not paying for the retirees anymore, we're paying just for our active employees. However, because of that change, there is a huge increase to the retirees' costs, a lot more than it would have been had we not made any changes and just stayed with MetLife and accepted the new plan they were giving us. So the district also is going to see a huge savings from this change. So we are proposing to help the retirees with this change by slowly increasing the amount that they're gonna pay. So we're gonna look at the district paying a portion of the difference and slowly decrease the amount the district puts in until the retirees are once again paying the full amount. And we'll utilize the savings that we have to cover that. There is a little bit of a gap. Jesse, if you go to the next slide. Oh, yep, so using the district's savings to help ease the retirees into their new rate structure, we're gonna work it in over a four-year period. They would pay their increased amount that they would have paid if we didn't make any change for that first year. And then after that, we'll slowly decrease the amount that the district contributes by about twenty-five percent each year. Any retirees that are not currently on the census and come on after this change is made, will have to pay their full amount. This is only going to apply to the current fifty-one retirees that are on that census. If this is all approved, then we will plan a meeting and invite the effective retirees so we can walk through the changes with them, so they kind of understand why we had to make the change. This isn't something we just decided to do, and how we're gonna help them through this. So the next slide will show you kind of the dollar amounts here. So the current existing total for all fifty-one retirees is about fifty-eight hundred dollars. Without making any changes, if we just took the plan that MetLife gave us, they would have to pay ninety-seven sixty-eight. So that's what we're proposing that they pay for this first year. We would pick up the difference. So we're gonna utilize that twenty-one thousand dollars in savings that we are gonna save from switching to help cover the pickup cost for the retirees. And then year two, we would only pick up seventy-five percent of the difference. Year three would be fifty percent, year four is twenty-five. And then in year five, they would be all on their own again. So the notes on the bottom, they're a little small, sorry. It just tells you that these figures are estimates. As retirees drop off the plan, maybe they decide not to pay their premium, or they no longer with us, that'll decrease the amount we have to pay in. The district's savings might not be as much as our wages go up for our employees. And those all affect, that's not something we can predict, so. And then I'm proposing that we use the fund balance reserves to help cover the cost difference between what we save and what we would have to pay for the retirees. In the end, after all of the years, it should be a wash. It shouldn't be a huge impact to the fund balance, but this is a one-time thing that is going to go away. It's not an ongoing cost that will continue year after year after year.
Is for the same level of coverage?
We're locked in for.
Two, three years.
Three years, which is important for us, I think, with one standard.
I need numbers. So I'm an average teacher that has been working here for twenty years. What am I paying for my monthly premium?
So that's gonna depend on how old you are and what your wage was when you retired. So the retirees can continue their coverage at their wage when they retire, but after five years, it reduces. And once you hit sixty-five, it reduces as well. So if you don't retire till you're sixty-five, it's automatically gonna reduce. And then the rate is.
Yeah, what's the rate, so whatever a teacher is paying right now?
Are we, right now, they're paying forty-two and a half cents per hundred. They will be paying three dollars and thirty-three cents.
And is it based on what their salary is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we've got some retirees on there that are currently paying less than a hundred dollars a year, some of whom are paying a thousand dollars a year. It just depends on what their wage was when they left and what their age is. It's gonna be a pretty significant increase to them. You can see currently it's fifty-eight hundred dollars for all fifty-one. It will be forty-five thousand for all fifty-one. That's huge.
Yeah.
And so we thought it was important that we try to ease them into this.
Do you think there's a lot of people who will fall off once they get to that five-year mark?
Honestly, we are going to have some that are falling off. We've got a few that are in their eighties and nineties. They're gonna fall off one way or the other. It's, you know, there's some people on there that might decide that the cost to continue is just too great, and they won't.
Yeah.
So what we'd like to do is probably run this through the finance committee in the near future here. And then we'll bring this back to the full board in June for a vote on this plan that we're proposing here. In the meantime, we would like to schedule some informational sessions with our retirees to get this word out. We'll be sending some information out in the mail to them as well. So we want to be as transparent as we can, because we know this is a change that not everyone is gonna be happy with, but as a fiscally responsible district, we need to make these changes.
Yeah, a little heads up for them would be good.
Yeah. Any other?
Further questions?
All right, I wanna get into a couple referendum updates that will lead into Kevin's presentation then. We met with Bayland Buildings on May ninth for our initial kickoff meeting. We reviewed the projects, the list of projects that were included in the language of the referendum on the ballots, discussed a little bit about timelines for projects. Kind of learned about the bidding process really looks like. So we're gonna try and group as many projects together as we can to get the bid out there and be more enticing for companies to bid on. We'll obtain at least three bids for projects. Those bids will come in directly to the district in a sealed envelope. We will review those bids and then pick who the best bid is for it, so. Bayland will assist us throughout this process as well as the project leads for this work. So we'll rely on them. We also met with McKinstry on April twenty-fifth to look at some energy efficiency projects, and we'll talk a little bit, that's something that is included in your packet that we'll look at later on in the meeting. We are working on, or we have scheduled about thirty-minute kickoff meetings for each project. On June third, Bayland again will be involved with those, but we're also including stakeholders for each project. So for example, if we're looking at the band choir room, we're gonna bring in the band choir teachers to hear their feedback, what they would like to see. We'll probably hopefully review some of the spaces with them. We'll start mapping out some timelines with that, so getting their input will be important. Any questions so far?
Bayland gonna be the project manager, or are they just?
Yes, they will be project manager alongside the district. They are able to bid as well for projects, but again, it can be a sealed bid. We decide who we're gonna go with, not Bayland, though, so.
Even all the way up to general contractor then?
Any other questions? All right. Gonna turn it over to Kevin. We all know Kevin Moen.
Nice to see you, everyone, and it's my first time to officially congratulate you on your successful referendum. So great work, and I'm sure it feels good to be on this side of the project. Be careful what you wish for, because now everything starts to happen, right? So here we go. And so along those lines, I did meet with Jesse and Amber probably about three weeks ago, four weeks ago, and started to develop what, you know, we thought was a thoughtful project plan for moving forward with the financing piece. And so later in the agenda tonight, there's a parameters resolution that would be kind of the catalyst to start that process. But before you get to that part in the resolution, I wanted to have a chance to talk with you about the plan of finance and, you know, have you look at it and think about it, and, you know, provide any feedback you might have. So the report, I think, was shared with you earlier here. And there are three things I want to talk about. First is an interest rate update. Next, I want to talk about the specific plan, and then give you an idea as to what that timeline looks like and what board action needs to occur. So the first place I'd like to turn your attention is this graph, this chart of interest rates. So the bottom chart, the dark blue line that extends across the width of the paper, is a chart that we've shared in our conversations with the public in the past. But this is a thirty-year indication of where interest rates have been over a thirty-year period of time for municipal bonds that are rated triple-A, a basket of bonds issued for twenty years. So it's a spot rate for a twenty-year loan, similar to the type of loan that you'd be considering issuing for this farming. So a tax-exempt loan for twenty years. This happens to be rated triple-A, you're probably in the high A category. But if you look on the left-hand side, thirty years ago, that interest rate was close to seven percent for that basket of bonds for a twenty-year borrowing. And as you head to the right-hand side of the page, I want you to notice how the interest rate moves down into, you know, the year two thousand twenty, in between twenty and the end of twenty-one. You can see the interest rates were incredibly low, and, you know, at that point in time, you know, they were probably in the mid to one percent, mid one to one and a half percent range. But at the end of two thousand twenty-one, the Fed started increasing Fed funds because they wanted to get control of inflation, they wanted interest rates to move up. And municipal bond interest rates moved up along with them. We've settled into a range on the right-hand side of the page that is, you know, roughly on this scale, you know, just below four percent, between three and a half and four percent. So think like three-point-seven-five-ish percent range. The reason I wanted to show you this is because if you were to consider just that window from two thousand twenty to now, you would say, yes, interest rates have increased dramatically, and we're at a higher level of interest rates. But really, when you expand that out and look at, you know, historically where we've been over a thirty-year period of time, we're at a very good rate, in a very good rate environment to consider borrowing. So just wanted to give you that context, so that's the first takeaway. The second takeaway, if you look at the right-hand chart on the top, right-hand side, is really what interest rates have looked like over the past year. And the reason I wanted to point that out is that there's been a relative, relatively high level of movement over that period of time. We've seen interest rates move up and move down relatively quickly. And in fact, over the past two weeks, we've really seen that happen again, a little bit. The reason I wanted to point that out is because I wanted, I think it's important that when you consider a plan of finance, that you have tools built into that plan of finance that give you some flexibility and some ability to move within small windows of opportunity, so that if you want to step back from the market, you can, or if you want to move forward more quickly, you can. And so we wanted to make sure that we built in some flexibility with timing in terms of that plan of finance because of the volatility in interest rates. What's causing that volatility, really, two things. One is a lot of economic information has been coming out. Two weeks ago, I would have said most of it has been information that seems to indicate that inflation is still active in the environment, which is bad for interest rates and has caused interest rates to move up. Real recently, we've seen some economic indicators that have shown that that inflationary pressure is moving off, and so our interest rates are coming back down. But investors really thought that interest rates were going to be moving downward because the Fed had indicated they were seeing less inflation in the market, we're gonna take their foot off the pedal and start to reduce Fed funds rates. Well, then, you know, they kind of backed off that statement. So that's one thing. The other is geopolitical things that are happening that are not real, you know, pleasant, lately, you know, wars and things of that nature. When they flare up and there's, you know, national and international unrest, there's a flight to quality, bonds reflect quality, and so investors come to bonds, and interest rates start to move down. So, you know, what's bad for the world is sometimes good for interest rates, unfortunately. And we've seen some of those seesaws, so those are the two things. The other thing that I wanted to point out, and the reason, you can move to the next slide, Jesse, thanks. If you take that borrowing interest rate, so that's highlighted in light blue on the next page, and you juxtapose it against what the Fed funds rates have been doing, those short Fed funds rates, there are a couple of periods of time over that thirty-year period of, that scale, where short-term interest rates were actually higher than the borrowing rate for a long-term borrowing. And we're in that environment right now. So what does that mean? It means when you borrow the money, there's an opportunity to reinvest it while you're waiting to pay contractors, while you're building your stuff, and make some decent income. We haven't seen that. In fact, if you look to the left of that number, as interest rates have been climbing down since two thousand eight, we were well below what that borrowing rate was. And in fact, it was very difficult to earn anything on your uninvested funds during these construction periods. So those pink disparities are those opportunities where short-term rates had actually been higher than long-term rates, and we're in one of those periods of time right now. They don't last for a long period of time, but we're fortunate that they're here. So if we can move more quickly, we may be able to take advantage of that. The other thing that I wanted to point out, just in terms of trends, when you look at those periods of pink interest rates, where the borrowing rate has been lower than the reinvestment rate, in one of those periods of time where that relationship is happening, when interest, the borrowing rate is relatively low compared to the. in one of those periods of time where that relationship is happening when the borrowing rate is relatively low compared to the other times. So there's some value in that, I think, in terms of moving forward. Questions on that?
Do you see anything happening with the upcoming election? What's your estimation? Ask everybody, I hate everybody.
Yeah, no, so I do think that, you know.
I think we're going to come off that pink at that time.
Yeah, I think so too. But I really feel like a lot of that activity is happening now and it's kind of factored into what expectations are with regard to interest rates. Although two elections ago, we saw a real dislocation in the market right after the election because the market was surprised by the result. I guess that's as much prognosticating as I would want to do in terms of the election. Election ended interest rates. So moving forward, when we were considering the plan of finance, as we discussed, there were four goals that we discussed in terms of what made sense. First and foremost, we wanted to make sure that the tax impact that we presented to the public was the tax impact that you were going to live with moving forward. Meaning, we wanted to make sure we hit that target that was presented to the public. Feel very confident that we're going to be able to do that. So then the next three pieces, I think, kind of go hand in hand. The first is obviously want to minimize your total interest cost. So we're going to do some things that would be standard things in terms of doing that. We're going to go to the bond market and the credit markets and get a standard and poor's credit rating. You currently have an S and P rating outstanding on your long-term debt. We think that's the right agency to go to. And in fact, watching Amber's presentation tonight, I'm certain that it's the right agency to go to because they value the types of information that Amber has shared with the board tonight. They'll ask to see these things memorialized over time. And we can in good conscience tell them that yes, you're doing that. So it's a rating agency that values that kind of stuff, so I think we'll be in good hands there. We also want to minimize interest rate risk. So we're going to suggest that you consider a parameters resolution. That parameters resolution will give you the ability to determine an amount not to exceed, a rate not to exceed, cost not to exceed as a board, and then establish a window of opportunity so you don't have to wait and sell the bonds on the exact date of your next board meeting. So it gives you a window of opportunity. Once the credit rating is in hand and once investors have the information, we can begin the clock ticking and look for the right opportunity to enter the market. Once the bonds are sold, the superintendent and board president can sign off on the details as long as the bonds fit within the parameters that you've established. And they'll report back to you on that sale. So that gives you flexibility, some timing flexibility. In terms of the method of sale, we're suggesting a negotiated method of sale where you work directly with Baird as an underwriter. And we will help execute that sale and sell those bonds to the public. That gives us the ability to not only have flexibility with regard to timing, but it also gives us the ability to have flexibility in terms of the sale process. Meaning, we can contact local banks and give them priority in terms of local investors and give them priority in terms of investing as long as they're willing to buy bonds at the scale. We're not saying, well, give us your price and you have priority. We're saying, these are where interest rates are in the market. Are you interested in the bonds at this price? And so it gives you the ability to manage that.
How often do you look at those? How often are you in contact with Jesse about?
The timing? Well, with Amber and Jesse, when we get the bonds ready, so we'll be, we'll have an expectation and say, based on rates that are in the market right now, this is where we would expect the sale to be. Looks like Tuesday's a good day. We're going to be heading in on Tuesday. If we get to Monday and the market feels really squishier Tuesday morning, we'll step back and not go on that Tuesday.
Are you the active manager or do you have a team?
Well, we have a team. So yeah, we have underwriters and salespeople at Baird that are nationally renowned and their expertise is in the state, second to none, nationally second to maybe one in terms of their ability to sell municipal bonds. So my job is to work between you and them. They're working with investors. I work for Baird, obviously, but I'm representing you in that situation. But.
What kind of fee is involved?
So our fee is not to exceed, I believe it's one and a half percent in terms of the underwriting discount. And I think it's in the parameters resolution. I believe that that's the underwriter's discount involved in that. And so that is our work to sell the bonds as well as the work for the referendum leading up until this point.
I'm going to interject here real quick. We won't actually write a check to Baird. The bonds will be sold for a premium and the investors will pay that premium to get those bonds because they're getting the interest payments as tax-free earnings. And so those premiums will pay Baird's fees, they'll pay the rating fees with standard and poor. They also pay for the administration fees for the person who, for the life of the bonds, will tell us, hey, you need to make this payment and make sure the money gets to the investors.
And as Amber mentioned, that cost is built into the interest rate. So when we put the plan of finance together, that estimate, obviously, it had to have a shelf life, was five and a quarter percent. Based on where we're at today in the market, we would estimate that to be at like 4.62%. And that has about a thirty basis point cushion in where the market is presently. Because we're still in the process of getting a rating, still in the process of putting the official statement together. So there's still some time before we're actually ready to market the bonds. So we're still trying to be conservative with that interest rate. So yeah, we feel that that'll give you the maximum pricing flexibility in terms of being able to enter the market as well as encourage local and bank involvement particularly, but investor involvement. And then the last piece, because you're borrowing less than fifteen million dollars in a calendar year, this is really important, you have up to three years to spend that money and not worry about rebate. Meaning, the difference between, let's say, we borrow at 4.6% and you're able to reinvest at 5%. Normally, the federal government wants that arbitrage income back. But they have two exceptions. If you're a small issuer, issue less than fifteen million in a calendar year, you have three years to spend the money and not worry about paying that back. I feel like you're comfortably inside that window of being able to spend the money. And so I feel like that's a really good thing for you to be able to try to achieve. And then the last thing, we assume one percent growth in value, which again, has been relatively conservative based on what you actually realize. But we also feel like that's closer to what your real growth is as opposed to inflationary growth. We talked a lot about that during the referendum. That the growth we want to see, or that we want to spread the tax or the cost over is other people's stuff. New people moving in, new things being built, not inflationary growth on property, right? So that's why we assume that one percent growth because we felt it was a little bit more, a lot more conservative than where we'd been. So turning the page is the actual plan of finance. And I won't go through it in too great of detail. But reading left to right, we have the levy year, which is the year in which you make your budget, and then the payment year. You currently have roughly $277,000 a year left on your existing loan. But you had an additional levy this year of $525,000 that is available to make some of those payments for the next two years. So we factored that in in the stabilization fund. So last year, your levy was $802,000 for debt service. Moving forward at that 4.62%, we believe that the payments are going to be roughly between $500 and $820,000 throughout the life of that borrowing. However, you're going to get a little bit additional aid compared to where you were last year for your debt service payments because you haven't spent money on aid above the 277. So as that new debt service, the additional amount above 277, rolls through the aid formula, you're actually going to get incremental aid. And so we've netted that out. So the combination of those two pieces will keep that impact well below where we expected debt service to come in at the 4.62%, 4.62%. And then when you factor in growth in value, we're comfortably inside that marker. I think the other piece of flexibility that you have here is that you don't necessarily need to use all of that stabilization money right away. If you get to October and you really like the way that your budget's coming together and you want to hold on to a little bit of that and use it to offset debt later, you have that flexibility. So this builds in a lot of flexibility for that plan.
Now, in the last column, mill rate.
Yes.
So combined, what's a combined mill rate?
Sure, so that's the gross mill rate for both your existing debt plus your new debt, less state aid.
I think we did kind of show that a little bit.
Probably not to this.
Not to this extent. But I also pushed back at Kevin a little bit on not showing this because I don't want, just because your mill rate's going down to 95 cents doesn't mean that you, City of Roslyn, or sorry, City of Algonquin resident are going to see a reduction in your tax bill. And I didn't want that going out to the public because I don't want them to think, oh, I'm going to see a reduction. You may not. Because this is based on equalized date, which is how we have to calculate our mill rates. Their rates, their assessments on their bills don't change every year on equalized, their assessed value.
If they're looking at their fair market value, that's the best gauge for people to use. And that's really the only way you as a school district can compare your taxes. But we feel very confident that we're going to be well within the constraints of that promise. So last piece is the activity timeline. So tonight with parameters resolution, that would be a kickoff to the process from the board's perspective. You can see on the administrative column, we've got a lot of steps between really the beginning of April and the end of April of '25. But the two big dates that I would draw your attention to is we're hoping mid-June to be in the market, to have that window to begin marketing the bonds by mid-June. Meaning that we could lock in rates at that time and you would actually have funds available to you to put to work back for the district in July. Hopefully, no later than mid-July, earlier the better.
Sounds good.
Exciting stuff, right?
It is.
Thanks for humor.
Well, it is nice to see all of the members in front of us and the plan. We appreciate all the work you did with us throughout.
Appreciate all of your hard work and terrific process up to this point.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Excuse myself.
Thank you.
All right, I'll finish up what I have and turn it over to the rest of the admin team here. So a big congratulations to the class of '24. We have thirty-eight seniors that are graduating Rocking State on Sunday. And we also have three juniors that will be graduating early with them, so excited for that. We had our award scholarship night on Friday, this last Friday. In total, our seniors will be receiving over $151,000 in scholarships. That is an amazing amount of numbers, amazing amounts for the number of students we have. So very proud of them. Seven hundred and sixty-seven NWTC college credits have been completed by your senior class. There's still 103 in progress right now. If you add those two together, that's equivalent about $261,000 in tuition. If you look at about $300 per credit that families are not paying for. Again, pretty amazing for what we can do for a district our size. Graduation is this Sunday, 2 o'clock in the fieldhouse. Open enrollment applications for next school year, so that window closed. We have five open enrollment applications in that we received, two students being in 4K. And then we have nine open enrollment applications out that were received, six of them being in 4K. We'll be asking the board to approve that tonight in the action items. Our CISA VII contract, CISA VII has done their contract a little differently this year than they have in years past. They are combining the special education services along with our learning services. In the past, they've always been separated out. So our services for occupational therapy, physical therapy, audiology are now included. We are hoping to enter into a ten-day for next year that we'll be using most of those days to support training with our elementary staff around literacy needs for Act 20 requirements. We've already set up dates with Charlotte Meyer from CISA VII to come in and do their training with our staff. And we also are looking at locking in with a two-year contract to secure the rates. In the past, we've always done just annual, so that will help reduce some of the costs over the two years, we think. The last thing I have is the Bay Lake Regional Planning Contract. So this is broad, starting last year, we had been approached to apply for a grant through the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, DOT. We received that grant last year in the amount of $20,831.20. That money is now going to go towards having a traffic study as part of the Safe Routes to School program. So we're really going to look at how are our kids getting to school safely? What does traffic look like in front of the elementary, in front of the middle school, high school here? How are kids walking, biking, kids are being dropped off? What does our bus routes look like? All of that will be taken into consideration. They'll do a study, provide us with a report. The district will have to match 20% of that total amount, so that'll come out to about $5,200 that we'll take out of our general fund for next year to support this work. And we're looking at starting in fall of '24 here. This is a company that has done this with many other school districts around the state. They've been fully vetted and I trust the work that they're doing. Any questions for me?
All right, we will keep going.
First thing I wanted to talk about was Staff Appreciation Week. So at the elementary school, we had a jam-packed, fun-filled week for all of our staff, largely in part to the elementary school PTS. They provided our staff with sweet treats. They had a gift of appreciation for our teachers. They hosted a lunch for us. They hosted, or they sponsored a name that tune game, which we played over the PA system. That was a hit. We had the teachers call into the office lines. And it had to be the eighth caller. So that was a lot of fun. We played that on Wednesday and then I had many requests to continue it through the rest of the week. So we continued to play Thursday and we played Friday. So it was a lot of fun. So that was sponsored by the PTS. Like I said, they sponsored a taco bar lunch. And then on Friday, they also sponsored an after-school social event where they provided our staff with a beverage coupon for the brewery, the cider bar, or the winery. So teachers after school on that Friday had the option to visit any of those establishments as they so chose. And that was really thoughtful and appreciated by all of our staff, so thank you for that. And then also, I had a lot of thank yous from the staff to the school board for the lunch that was provided that week as well. So we definitely felt all of the love and all of the support and we appreciate that. Moving on to end of the year miscellaneous. May goes by in the blink of an eye. So we have a jam-packed schedule of activities. We have field trips all throughout the month. I'm not exaggerating when I say there's at least one field trip, if not two or three, scheduled per day starting in May. Actually, probably end of April, all the way until the last week of school. So every day, we've had a grade level doing something. Today, we had first grade and second grade gone. First grade went to Braemer Park, second grade went to the Wildlife Sanctuary. We've had farm visits. We've had, our sixth graders are going to Camp Unalia, so they're leaving on Wednesday in the morning. And so they'll be gone for the rest of the week. Heritage Hill, Crossroads, the Farm Wisconsin Discovery Center, bowling. The beach is coming up. The list goes on and on and on, so we've been having a lot of fun. I wanted to mention a couple of dates. So, the PTS is hosting their annual end of the year bash next week, Wednesday. So, that's May twenty-ninth, after school from three until six, so all are invited to attend. Last day with students is May thirty-first. And on that day, we will have our all-school awards show at eight-thirty. Our sixth grade promotion is at ten, and then we have 4K graduations starting at one. So, it's, it's hard to believe that we're already talking about that, but it's here. And then we'll roll right into summer school. So, Lindsay Harmon, who's coordinating summer school, provided some information to me, which I will share about our classes this year. We have a team of seventeen teachers who are gonna be teaching summer school classes. We have five paras who will be supporting in the classrooms, specific students. We did register, she did registration online only this year, so that was able, we were able to pull a little bit more data, a little bit more easily. We have two-hundred-and-five students signed up for classes. There's about seventy-seven percent of the spots are reserved, so three-hundred-and-two spots are reserved. So, there's still room for students to explore their interests and expand their knowledge. We have twenty-eight different classes. A couple of the highlight classes, Summer Musical as always. We have a new babysitting certification course. We have cooking class in partnership with the Kiwanis County Public Health Department. And then she also says, be on the lookout for a new class, Speed and Strength, led by Amy Crowe and Whitney Ebert. Some more information will be coming on that, and that'll start right away, that first Monday. What would that be, this, the tenth?
The tenth.
I think, is that right?
Yeah.
Right after school itself, so. One, we'll roll right into the next, that's all.
How many kids were enrolled in summer school last year?
Ooh, I'd have to pull that information. We're about, we're about the same.
And do they, they, it's just enrichment, it's not a way that they can't accelerate?
Right, right. We used to offer something called Summer Jump Start, which is more of a remedial intervention type of program. And that we offered in like late July to August, but we just had a really hard time with interest in that, so.
This is all fun, like Calling All Princesses, The History of El Goma, Walking Tours of El Goma, the beach. I think mine's in Painting Rocks, like.
Nature Nights.
It's so fun, they're so excited about summer school.
Makes me wanna sign up for elementary school again.
I asked if I could enroll. Pretty, pretty princess who doesn't wanna do that.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah.
All right, moving on, middle school, high school principals report, Dave.
All right, we are a little more subdued up here. We did have our National Honor Society and Senior Awards Night, this is past Friday. And we tweaked the venue and a little bit of the approach. We held it down at the P A C, which was nice, got some good feedback from people that attended that they liked that. I know after, immediately afterwards, and then actually in the last couple of days, had multiple conversations about how to improve it for the next year. I know Mr. Frankman's looking at having more student participation, so I'm looking forward to that. It's always, I think, tricky because it's not the most exciting content, right? Like, like an hour and a half of awards being presented is, it gets to be a little long, but I did get mostly positive feedback on how it was done, and so that was good. Just a note, N H S, welcome to, and I should've gotten the number, but I don't have the exact number. Was it twelve? I wanna say it was twelve. Yeah, I had twelve new members. Nanette Colm, who's been the advisor for years, has said that that was the highest number she's ever had. So, we were excited, we were excited about that. And just, I know it's not because students don't qualify, it's because they don't apply. So, she did, she did a great job of getting kids' applications to come in, which is great.
How many total are there? Twelve added, but how many?
Twelve added.
Seventeen, I think, seventeen total, there were only five upper.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think most of, most of the new ones are.
Yeah, because we had a lot.
Okay.
So, that was, that's nice to see. Then moving on, middle school dance, that was exciting. I chaperoned that. We also had, yeah, yes, the shirts were fantastic. Mrs. Delabrew bought her, chaperoned their own custom shirt, I was security. I don't know why people can tell that by my massive frame, but I wouldn't anyway. So, yeah, we did, and we did that mostly because there, there's really a great group of kids in that eighth grade class. In fact, when I was looking at to see who qualified, who participated, that group of students has largely a very incredible collective GPA. So, I was glad that we were able to do that for those kids. And the parents and the students, for that matter, did a great job of taking care of it, setting it up, taking it down. I was, it ended at ten, I was home at ten-thirty, so they did a fantastic job. And Peter Schmidt, shout out to him, he DJed it. Okay, and then just student engagement. There, I'm continuously impressed at how our teachers work to engage our students in the learning process. So, and there's included one example there. So, Mr. Cruz does a, a unit on Canada, right? And I got to sit in and observe that class and it was interesting. He tied in some personal stories of people that live in Canada, there were some of their heroes. Obviously does some geography with that, quizzes them on different, different parts of Canada. But he wraps it up with a taste test between American macaroni and cheese and Canadian macaroni and cheese. We're called Canadian craft dinner. And so, they go into Miss Malone's kitchen area there and make it up, and then he takes a survey. Craft wins usually, but there are a few that like the Canadian, the Canadian one's better. I didn't get to test them, so I couldn't tell you the difference, the difference of that. Just some other things, like the body class, when the word appears in Peterson Park and helped plant some trees there. And then I also got to observe literature circles in English one with Mrs. Perralero, where she had really prepared, it was called the Cafe, and, and she had various questions about a whole variety of books. So, the students got to choose a book of their interest, read it, and she had some pretty thought-provoking questions that the students rotated through the room to different tables and worked with different groups of students to talk about. You know, how did their books address these themes, or what commonalities did they see in the books, or what common questions came up? But it was really fascinating to see the level and the richness of the dialogue, because that, they didn't start the year that way. I mean, if you went up in early in the year, it was a lot of staring at each other and like, you know, whatever. And now, they've come so far in being able to have some really in-depth conversations. So, proud of the work that the teachers are doing and engaging our kids in so many ways. And that's mine.
Any questions for you? All right, moving on, Pathfinder, El Goma Venture Academy, the Pack of Pups reports, Katie.
Yes, Pack of Pups, we are full after the meeting. I don't know if people listened to it or what, but I had like four phone calls the next day about getting babies, and so that went real quick. We are definitely full for the summer, but we're also fully staffed for the summer, so. Definitely looking forward to it, we're looking forward to actually being out more this summer with the kids around the community, so. That is exciting. A B A, I know we talked about it a few times, but our spring showcase is Wednesday from four to six. We have some of the high school students coming through as a practice tomorrow for, so our kids can practice presenting to them, and I think maybe some elementary students are coming up, so. Getting excited for that. And then others are just wrapping up the end of the year. The kids have been definitely getting outside, doing a lot of kayaking around various places. They were hiking through bogs up in Sturgeon Bay with Adam Proctor. Yeah, they're just wanting to be outside, so we're getting them outside. And then after spring showcase is over, it's kind of just calm anyway, so. They'll be outside a lot more. Pathfinder, end of the year wrap-up. We actually have six kids graduating, I know I said one, but we have six kids graduating from Pathfinder this year. There's two more that should be done in June. And then one more that I'm personally working with that'll be done hopefully before August. So, it's just always great to see kids kind of have that second chance to be able to finish up their credits. I know one of our kiddos, we got an email, well, like, do you know where this student is? Do you know where this student is? And it was one kid that, she was almost done last year and had one credit of math and a half a credit of Phi had left. And so, I reached out to her two weeks ago, I'm like, girl, you gotta pack it, like, I know you have it. And she came in two days later and turned it in. So, it's just a kid that likely wouldn't have anyone to graduate. Going to be able to walk across the stage, so. So, it's, it was my favorite part of graduation. And then they went to an escape room last week and escaped, which we weren't sure if they liked.
What?
Sometimes teamwork for them.
That's a good effort if they escaped.
Would you have left them there if they didn't?
Probably. They found them out somehow.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, Special Ed Wellness Report.
Marie could not be here tonight, so she gave me a write-off. First is the Self-Evaluation of People, Non-Discrimination, Equity, Educational Opportunities. So, this is a five-year annual reporter, or five-year report that we need to do, submit to D P I. There are ten areas that are included in the report, and I'll just leave these off here. The first one is School Board Policies and Administrative Procedures. Number two is Enrollment Trends and Patterns in Classes and Programs. Number three are Methods, Practices, and Curriculum of Materials Used in Instruction, Counseling, and Pupil Assessment and Testing. Four is Trends and Patterns of Disciplinary Actions. She skipped five, so. Participation Trends and Patterns of Athletics and Extracurricular Activities is number six. Number seven is Scholarship Award Trends and Patterns. Number eight is Equality of Educational Opportunities and Non-Discrimination. Number nine is the District's Electronic Communication. And number ten is Methods of Conducting the Self-Evaluation. So, the report was included in your board packet. A big thank you to a committee that really worked hard on putting this together. You can see it's pretty lengthy, so the board will be asked to approve this tonight in action items. And then we'll be posting this on the website as a requirement.
Now, I do have some questions on this. So, this is just, was this your first year that you've done this?
First year our group has done it, but it's not the first year the district has done it, no.
Okay, and where are the results? I mean, we just have very limited findings, is that the results? Is that all D P I requires? So, no hard data.
So, what we, we're actually more looking at the action steps.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, so this is just, okay.
Take a look at it and have recommendations and some, some timeframes of.
Because I was curious about the bullying stuff, because that's been a little hot topic on Facebook. So, I just wondered if, you know, how many cases of bullying have been reported? Where are the steps going through it? It says, you know, parents are informed, how do you know that parents are aware to file a complaint?
Yep, so that's all under board policies that we have posted on the website?
Yeah.
We put it in our student handbooks as well for parents to have that information, so.
They may have it, but do they know how to fill that out, is my question.
So, that's something that I think is a district we can work, do more on, and I think that was one of the action items.
It was. I mean, that's kind of what I saw, so I was making sure I'm reading it correctly with where we were going with all of this. A lot of notes and questions as to what all this is about. That's the beginning.
I'm sure Marie would be happy to sit down and go through.
Awesome, awesome, actually, I would enjoy that.
I'll move on to the Health and Wellness Committee. So, they are doing some step challenges with staff. They have twenty-four, twenty-seven staff members participating in a four-week step challenge. They divide it into three different categories, and so they're recording their fitness. They partnered with Blue Yorkey to support and do some incentives with them, so. They're also doing some partnering with Roots Yoga on Mondays. They have eleven staff members that have signed up that come in after school to do some yoga classes with Jamie Smiling, so. And the last one is Hit with Wit. Whitney Ebert, our A D, has been leading some, I don't know, hitting classes apparently, so.
Got an M M A team coming up?
And then on June fourth, the Wellness Committee has bring, is bringing in Nicola Financial or Bank to do a brunch and learn. So, we're, have a, some bankers coming to talk with staff that would like to be present to learn more about investing and just retirement, so. So, looking at kind of the whole picture, not just the fitness piece of things. And the last thing Marie has is our Special Education Teacher. A team concluded some interviews this last week to fill our vacant position. Very impressed with the candidates, and we hope to move forward with one in particular. And there probably will likely be some internal switching of some special education teachers in case needs, so.
Your staff newsletter had a mention about an award potentially? Has that been published?
They haven't given a rap yet.
At least it was.
It was.
That newsletter went a lot.
Any questions for Jessie or Marie via Jessie? Okay, moving on to committee reports. We had one committee meeting that we have minutes for, that was the Policy and Practice Committee meeting.
So, the Policy and Practice Committee met and we had the luxury of having Allison and Amber and Jessie walk us through the handbook. We looked at that in depth to be able to present a final copy to you guys tonight. And I think the day after, or shortly thereafter, our meeting, you had a call with our consultant who helped us work on that. But then a copy was provided in your packet for tonight.
Any questions? Other items for discussion? Let's move on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, and the Policy and Practice Committee meeting minutes of May eighth, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Made by Amy, seconded by Jeremy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the bills that were presented.
Second.
Seconded by Chris Schley. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the W I A A twenty-four, twenty-five membership.
I'll second.
Motion made by Amy, seconded by Chris Schley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we need a motion to approve the open enrollment applications for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. That was, how many, five?
Five and nine, right?
Five and nine.
That's what I was wondering, are we approving those coming in as well as those going out? So, five in, nine out.
Yes.
I'll move that.
All right.
Second.
Motion made by Amy, seconded by Chrissy. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five CISA seven contract.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Chris Schley, seconded by Jeremy.
I have a question. So, in that contract, they, I, what, I need to know the timing of it. Looking for age, because they don't really give hours, I can't remember what they give.
Minutes?
Yes, and that was confusing to me. What does that mean?
Are you talking about for the special education?
Correct.
So, eighteen units for audiology, four thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy for OT, thirteen ninety-five for PT, so it's based off of the student I E Ps and number of minutes. I believe a unit.
Fifteen minutes?
That's what I was wondering.
I don't, I don't wanna.
I know they went to a new format, but this is the first like live one I've seen.
Marie would know, so we can follow.
All right, that's another request to have myself, I'm gonna make an appointment with her. Don't scare, I'm not trying to scare, I just have questions, trying to understand.
Yeah, and it was sort of shocking initially to see the dollar amount compared to previous years, but it's because of special ed. Yeah, and it was sort of shocking initially to see the dollar amount compared to previous years, but it's because the special ed.
Correct.
Special ed was included, and we always paid that, we just didn't see it all in one contract, so. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve first agency Gallagher base accident insurance coverage in the amount of three-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So, move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Lonnie, seconded by Amy, all in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the revised employee handbook effective July one, twenty-twenty-four. Second. Motion made by Chris Benish, seconded by Chrissy. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve El Goma School District Self-Evaluation of People, Nondiscrimination, and Equality of Educational Opportunity.
So, move.
Motion made by Jeremy, seconded by Chris Benish. All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the Energy Efficiency Contract with McKinstry for seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven, seven-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-ninety-five dollars.
I'll move that.
Second. Motion made by Amy, seconded by Chrissy. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not-to-receive ten-thousand-and-fifty-thousand dollars in general obligation promissory notes.
So, move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Chris Schly, seconded by Jeremy, will take a roll call vote on this. Jeremy?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Chris Benish, can I also say yes? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the donation of two thousand dollars for El Goma School District science program from Ebert Enterprises.
I'll move that.
Motion made by Chris Benish.
Your main.
And did I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Chrissy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve Bay Lake Regional Planning Contract for twenty-six thousand, thirty-nine dollars.
So, move. I'll second.
Motion made by Amy, seconded by Chris Schly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any requests for future agenda items? And I need a motion to go into executive session and discuss the statute nineteen-point-eight-five, subsections one and C, for the purpose of personal matters, fires, and staffing.
So, move. Second.
Motion made by Lonnie, seconded by Chris Benish, roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.